All right, welcome to the special city council meeting workshop for Friday, December the ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Hilbrick, will you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dela Garza?
I am present.
Councilwoman Solis?
Here.
Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young?
Here.
Councilman Loughran?
Here.
And Mayor Bucknig?
Here. All right, if everybody please rise for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor-
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Garza, any announcements and/or reminders today?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilor. No, sir.
All right. Is there something next Thursday?
Yes.
Awards?
Well, next Thursday, we do have our citywide service award celebration. And so we are expecting a great crowd. I think we've had almost four hundred RSVPs to that. So we're really excited for that. Hopefully, you receive your invitation. But that'll take place here at the Dome next Thursday evening.
Could that be emailed out again?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, great. No further announcements or reminders? Items from council? No?
Yep.
Good to see everybody.
Great seeing you.
We'll close items from council. Citizens Communication, anybody wishing to address us before we get into the work session, please step forward to the microphone. All right.
I don't think you got one yet.
And as you're making your way, please remember to keep comments to the three-minute time mark.
Oh, Neil? Everybody present?
We're gonna have to adjust the mic.
Can you hear me?
Make the mask down, too.
April, fix the mic down, face it downward.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, my name is Wilma Edwards. I live at thirty-five oh-three Collins, Victoria, Texas. And I'm, again, I'll come back to address the city council about free clothes and ministry. I'm still working on that. I'm still needing the building. And things need to be done. And I'd like to say that everywhere I go, everywhere I, when I talk to them, the city is not going to do anything to help us. But I don't believe that because I have a God that knows what's right and what's wrong. You may not know, but I know my God knows. And I'm having patience. And let me just go ahead and put, some of you don't know what the free clothes ministry is. That is when we give the free clothes and anything they need. And this is under the hill. It's not on the north side of town. The building is ten oh-four south Navarro. And they demolished it. Really, they shouldn't have because that was a historical building. And we restored that building in two thousand and fourteen. It's been empty for I don't know how many years. But God gave us that place. And we worked. And the volunteers worked. People helped us by putting electricity in that building, water, and whatever we needed. This all was done free. And it's hard to think about all those people that helped us, and we don't have a building now. I didn't do that. So we restored the building. And we began in two thousand and fourteen under the Masonic home. Masonic, that means we, the Masons and Eastern started out of Houston, Texas, owned the building at that time. And when we came in, we didn't have to pay anything because that was a nonprofit organization, which nobody seemed to believe that. And I know staff from, Mrs. Staff, assistant managers, workers, they work hard with me trying to get this done. But they have, they do not, or have not found now that they owe us for the taxes that they charged us. And when I mean us, that's the Mason and Masonic. Because that was a nonprofit organization. And that meant you didn't have to pay. But they did. And before I leave, I'm gonna give something to our assistant manager. We're still working on improvement, including repairing the roof. Now, that's what we were doing. We had repaired everything but the roof of the building. And this young lady came in and sitting there and saw us doing a great marvelous job. The volunteers gave us clothes. Expensive clothes. Nice clothes. We didn't put anything out that wasn't fit to wear. She came in and sat down with two men. And next thing I know, they put a code on there. Says, "We have to demolish the building."
Ms. Edwards, can you please wrap it up?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you please wrap it up? The other three minutes has expired.
Wrap it up?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Wrap it up? I don't have anything to wrap it up with.
But thank you, then. Appreciate your comments today. Thank you, Ms. Edwards. All right, is anybody else? All right, seeing no one else come forward, we'll close citizens communication and go into the work session, C-one Unified Development Ordinance, Module One update.
Yes, sir. So to introduce the topic really briefly, and for the benefit of those that might be tuning in, this is obviously, this is a conversation that, as you know, has been happening for quite a while. That was something that was recommended in the two thousand and thirty-five comprehensive plan when it was first adopted back in two thousand and sixteen. So this has been sort of in the radar for quite a while. And we ended up getting to the point where we realized this was an effort too large for our internal staff to tackle. And last year, went ahead and contracted with Fries and Nichols to help us through this process. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Chance Sparks with Fries and Nichols, who's the project manager and whom you're familiar with. He's presented before. And he'll walk you through an update on where we are in that development process. And we all are hoping for a very robust conversation with you today as we figure out next steps on the items you hear about today. So, Chance?
All right, thank you. Chance Sparks, Fries and Nichols, San Marcos, Texas. Really happy to be back here, visiting with y'all today to talk about the first module of your Unified Development Ordinance. So this, I'm gonna control two things here, so this'll be fun. So we did have a steering committee meeting back in August. And from there, I've been drafting this module ever since. Our first module, or portion of the code, is the most complex and difficult. We typically do that first because it influences all the other pieces. So kind of where we are, we started this off with diagnostic process. Y'all recall that. We're basically laid out, here are the issues we've identified and where we think we need to go. We're now in this code drafting process. We're about on the correct schedule. We're within about a month of it. And we'll proceed through this into adoption and training. So this is just the first of the modules as we go forward. So to kind of get you a quick familiarization, I believe you've had a copy of the module for a couple of weeks now. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read it. We recognize it's a very, very dry read. It's a regulatory document. And it hasn't been enhanced with graphics and things like that yet. This first portion has the land uses. Again, y'all don't have traditional zoning here, but you do regulate by use or use category. And so this includes some land use tables, some use-specific standards, and overlay standards. And then you have your development standards side of this. This is where you find your things like landscaping, screening, how you address lighting, parking standards, and things like that that are part of this. There's a piece of this that is not in this module, but will be relevant in the next one. And that's the, when do these things apply to existing development conversation? That's talking about non-conforming sites and properties and things like that. We want to get a handle on where you want your standards to be before we talk about where we want to make those adjustments. In fact, that's gonna be our last question of the day, is looking at what should be triggered and when. So to get into this, the first section you see in this is authority and applicability. This is where we reinforce what we state at the beginning of the UDO about where is the city citing its authority to enact these different regulations? We do specifically state that we're not using chapter or section two-eleven double-oh-five. That's what cities use when they're establishing traditional zoning districts. It's not what y'all have. So we're being very explicit that that is not the intent here. And again, we're gonna talk about the triggers for compliance a little further down the road. Once you get into this, into the organization, you'll find a, it's, or the organization is looking at specific regulations based on the land use. So whether the property is commercial, whether it's residential, multifamily, is what shapes each of these categories. And then we have dimensional standards based on this. You kind of see the breakdown of the types. What we're trying to do is create these tables that become a single point of reference for a code user. A developer comes in and they're trying to decide how they want to develop the property. Because you don't have a zoning district in place, it means that they've got a wide spectrum of how they might want to use that property. So if you can get all the key dimensional standards in one place, it makes it much easier for them to make decisions about what they should do with their property, if they're subdividing, how they should divide that property to be most effective. So this is just a quick snapshot of what that looks like on the, you know, in a full table format. You'll see the minimum lot areas, setbacks are listed in this, including when you've got corners versus interior setbacks. And a few of these that get called out where there's a specialized standard. Good example of that is if you're dealing with townhouses. Those behave like a typical single-family use, but they have different standards based on whether it is where two of the units are touching versus an end unit. Likewise, corners are usually treated differently. So we've included standards like that to provide for that variability. We also include the minimum parking ratios in this table. That's mainly because it helps you tie it back really clearly to what's expected of any particular use, again, having all the answers in one place. That's kind of a continual theme that you'll hear over and over is get your answers into one place where, over the span of three pages, a lot of questions get answered.
I have a question on that one.
Yes.
Do you want to get into the weeds or not?
I am happy to get into the weeds.
Okay. On the parking standards for suburban multifamily. Right now, we're currently one per. Here.
No, just, Julie, I prefer for you to come up here. She's gotta be on camera, too, you know?
So our multifamily is, a lot of it's based on the number of units, like our number of bedrooms. So we have like a one-to-one if it's for senior housing. And then there's like a one and a half if, for up to two-bedroom apartments. So it really kind of depends on the mix of the size of the apartments for the multifamily development. It's not a clear-cut one-to-one. But for elderly or senior housing, it is a clear-cut one-to-one.
Okay. Thank you for answering the question.
Okay, I have to go into the weeds a little bit more then because I'm looking at the chart that we're talking about. She just said one-to-one for senior, and it's not referenced. Is that just something else that needs to be added to the chart?
Oh, current versus what's in there. It's something that we can definitely add if you're dealing with like an age-restricted unit. You can use that as a basis for differentiating.
Well, I mean, the chart seems to say where in the code this comes from. So I'm just wondering if that needs to be added, or if it's somewhere else in the chart.
Sounds like that, if that's of interest, that's something we can certainly add.
Yeah, so this current proposed draft is really silent, doesn't differentiate between a senior housing multifamily or, you know, non-regulated multifamily. Anybody can live there. So it's up to council if you want to direct us to have a specific standard for senior. We can. Otherwise, it'll just be all multifamily.
I would leave it all multifamily.
Yeah, I'm not asking for it to be in there. I thought that you were saying it already was.
Our current ordinance differentiates, but the proposed ordinance does not.
Okay. Sorry.
Are there other questions, or?
Nope, thank you, Chance.
We also have specific use standards that appear for this. And that's because you can't address every single circumstance in the table. And so we start looking at the specialized uses, issues that are unique to Victoria. For example, we have standards for manufactured homes and then RV parks. Multifamily, whether to trigger amenities and things like that. And also looking at some of the different types of housing that still fall into that kind of that single-family format, but it's, or they're close to it. Things like duplexes, townhomes, things like that. So that you can address those needs without having to necessarily create a completely different use category for them. Automotive uses, this is especially considering issues of adjacency. If you have homes that are right next door, that can often present compatibility issues with automotive uses, unless you take certain design approaches with the automotive uses. Also payday loans, brew pubs, some things like that that can present challenges depending on their particular performance characteristics, some things like that. And then accessory uses, which we'll talk about here in just a minute. One of the questions that we had during this drafting phase, though, was looking at multifamily. And whether Victoria wants to take the step of requiring any additional amenities for multifamily development? Or if you want to require parkland dedication, parkland development fees? Or quite honestly, even both? So I wanted to throw that out and see if there's any interest in any of these topics.
I'll simply throw out, and I guess staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I am fairly certain that our Parks Master Plan also came with a recommendation to pursue parkland dedication ordinance as a way to obviously ensure that, you know, future developments have that recreational component. And it kind of gets that off of our back, right, from having to worry about it later. I'm not sure how detailed of that recommendation came in the Parks Master Plan, but I know that it was included in that as a long-term recommendation.
But it wouldn't be a, are you saying an apartment complex would need to then dedicate to the city portion of their property to be a park?
They're alternates.
Or just maintain it themselves?
What we typically see for multifamily projects is if you have a parkland dedication requirement, multifamily typically pays a fee in lieu of that.
Right, a fee.
And then that goes in so that the city can purchase property or develop parkland property elsewhere. And then some cities also have internal amenity requirements that are privately held. It's things like, you know, requiring an onsite dog park or a swimming pool or something like that.
Yeah, and many cities have that model, not only with parkland, but other things like drainage or whatever the case may be, where they have, you know, require to do X, Y, and Z. And if you don't, you pay X amount of money because eventually, we're gonna have to pay, you know, to solve that issue or provide that service down the line. And, but I think, I think what we're wanting to, I think, explore is whether we want to go down that path and have that conversation around the parkland dedication ordinance, and then come up with some options. Is how I understand where we're at with it.
Yeah, it's us understanding, are you ready to take that step where we should draft that language?
And can you give an example of, I know we're talking about multifamily, but can you give an example, since we're kind of rearing a little bit to parkland dedication ordinance, on what that would look like in a traditional residential development?
Sure. So what you'll typically see is within that dedication ordinance, there'll be the fundamental requirement, which is usually tied to a certain number of acres per, usually fifty residents is what's commonly used, or fifty housing units. And then you do that as a pro-rata based on whatever the unit count is. So if it's a multifamily project and it's three hundred units, then that would be a six-acre dedication typically. Or same thing if it was a residential neighborhood. You also will see that if you're going down that dedication path, there's standards for the quality of that dedicated property. In other words, it can't just be like, here's some cast-off property on the corner that we couldn't use anyway. You actually have qualitative standards for usually level of frontage, proximity to residents within that neighborhood, and also often minimum improvement requirements. What level do you improve the park? Or do you pay a parkland development fee and the city then develops the park? So they dedicate the land and the city makes the improvements later. That particular model is a model we tend to recommend because usually cities like to have control of what's getting built in their park down to the brand of the equipment, because they have to maintain it long-term. So that's usually how that dedication piece works. But there's usually also a fee-in-lue piece that provides an alternative where the developer can pay usually something tied to the market value of land for any dedication fees. And then you actually run a, kind of a cost allocation based on acreage for improving a park. And that's how you arrive at your parkland dedication and parkland development fee-in-lue. That's the typical arrangement. A city the size of Victoria often has to create park districts so that where the money's being contributed for fee-in-lue, it's going to benefit an area nearby versus, you know, they're building a brand-new neighborhood on the far north side of Victoria, and you're using that to make improvements on the far south side. That does change when you're looking at major parks. I think of like a riverside park that benefits really the whole city. That, you can pull the money from anywhere. So it's a little bit complicated, but that's generally how it works.
So the actual multifamily amenity section is about on page twenty of, it's on my, twenty on my document that I emailed out. So if you have a printed copy in front of you of the actual Module One. But it's that list of amenities that would be required for multifamily, like swimming pools, dog parks.
Yeah, swimming pools, dog parks. Usually, you give a menu of different things. And it's, here's a list of ten amenities, pick five, sort of thing.
So that's currently in the draft. And then an option would be keep that and add dedication or development fees, or not have that and only have dedication, development fees, or any combination thereof.
So if, because I look at some of these amenities and they're park-like in their structure and what, so how does that play if you had both? Where you have a list of amenities, and let's say they put in a playground and they put in a dog park or whatever. Do you still have the parkland dedication requirement regardless of what amenities are put in? Or does certain amenities kind of mitigate how much parkland is required?
No, it'd be neither or, or both. If we choose to have parkland dedication, it would not matter if they put in amenities generally. And we are not seeing apartment complexes really built without amenities either, is kind of another component to think of. A lot of times apartment complexes, just to satisfy the market, are going to provide a certain level of amenities.
So kind of what it sounds like is that you maybe want to go down this path of go ahead and drafting up a parkland dedication. How do y'all feel about requiring amenities for multifamily as well?
I think so. I'd like to see a certain number to pick from exterior versus interior. I don't want someone to come and just say it's all interior stuff, but, you know, sometimes we need to be inside during August.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I think we're seeing them built with the amenities as it is to be marketable right now. And I think there should be, you know, some kind of requirement. But I guess one thing I have a question about, are, this section, as it's drafted, identifies certain amenities? You have to have X number of these. Is there a possibility, or should we consider putting in maybe kind of something at the discretion of staff, Julie and her staff, in terms of an amenity that's not listed that maybe we're not thinking of? That they could say, hey, we count this as an amenity. For example, we have, you know, complex Wi-Fi, you know, everybody gets that, you know, is that an amenity? We have EV charging stations, something like that. So a lot of people would view as an amenity, but maybe in, on the list, that we could have some discretion within development to say, okay, we're gonna count that as one of these amenities.
Yeah, we've included language like that in other amenity regulations, where it'll say something along the lines of the Director of Development Services may consider other alternatives and establish information requirements necessary to make a decision. Something like that.
That'd be a good idea.
I mean, because I see things like, you know, let's say you have onsite retail where they do a multifamily unit with a coffee shop and a bakery up front. I mean, if I'm living there, that's an amenity for me, you know? It's a, I think something like that probably ought to be in the consideration of, did you meet your requirements?
Daycare.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we call those oftentimes like preferred pattern amenities, where you have like, it's something that is not just useful to them, but might be useful to others outside of the project as well. Or if you're trying to encourage mixed use, I will often see that place as a value in the amenities. All right, I think we've got good direction there. I'm gonna continue my two-handed method here. All right. The next thing I want to touch on was accessory uses. This is something that is complex in Victoria because, again, you don't have traditional zoning. So funny things can happen in the middle of a neighborhood from time to time. Typically, we'll establish standards for accessory home occupation use. And we will establish what types of businesses are okay for that. A lot of times, that's tied to certain performance standards. You know, are people coming to that business onsite? If so, how many? The hours of operation. And sometimes it even looks at what percentage of the home is dedicated to that use. Those are all really common standards. And then also whether it creates nuisances. So a good example that we'll sometimes use is like family counseling. It's a really common home-based business where you might have somebody come onsite, but it's only one client at a time. And sometimes it's actually beneficial for it to be in a home environment. That's usually a pretty accepted home occupation use. One that might be less acceptable is somebody is running a full construction company out of their backyard. It's a home-based business, but they also have lots of equipment and nuisance issues to come with it. So that's kind of what we mean by home occupations. And there's also accessory dwelling units. These are commonly called like a casita or a garage apartment, backyard cottage, granny flat, lots and lots of names.
She shed.
Yeah, she shed. And all that. And they're always secondary. Typically, they shouldn't be larger than the primary structure. What we're proposing is that, is that these would be required to be on the same meter as the principal dwelling. There's one area that, in talking to Julie, we think is a good area for an exception. And that's in the historic districts. This goes back to, these were built in a different era. And oftentimes, those water meters and electric meters are not in the most convenient location because that's what happens with historic things. They're really great. They have great character. Almost never convenient. And so we'll be, see if you're comfortable with that type of variance built into the code. Also, are there certain businesses that come to mind as being particularly incompatible as a home-based business? I mean, there's some that are, you know, obvious, like the one I mentioned, but are there others that come to mind? Anything you'll have a sticky wicket?
Hair salons?
Hair salons, tattoo parlors, lawn care companies. Those are the most frequent complaints my office receives about people running businesses out of their homes. So we could just explicitly prohibit those types of businesses if we're inclined to.
I mean, we're trying to think about what may happen in the future, and retail's another one. That, I mean, nobody really thinks about that now, but how do we know what's gonna happen?
We could make an appointment-based type rule. So that would cover, I mean, and a lot of cities have a typical appointment-based. So that's your, you know, if you have an accountant or an attorney or counseling, you know, those are appointment-based occupations. But retail's generally open to the public during set hours.
Right. And I know that one of the, shortly after it went up, and this is in your area, where somebody popped up, you know, a building and runs some kind of auto mechanic shop, you know, out of the front yard, in essence. And when that structure was going up, you know, we were getting a lot of calls, you know, about how could the city allow, you know, this to go up, you know, in a residential- know, this to go up, you know, in a residential area? In this instance, it would also address that scenario.
But I think he's mainly using it for personal use, because you never see any vehicles or anything out there. And the fact that he's got the entrance facing his house, you don't ever see anything inside of the garage anyway.
Yeah.
It's just a huge she shed, that's all it is, but it's a heat shed.
And generally, for accessory buildings, we make them, we can add a requirement that they be a certain percentage or smaller than the main house, so that it's definitely subordinate to the primary residence. So if you have, you know, a 2,000-square-foot house, your accessory unit can only be, you know, 1,000 square feet. Fifty percent, or 75% or 25% are other common rules.
And by calling it, having the word dwelling in there, does that have implications? Like if someone has a 2,000-square-foot home and has a 40-by-60 metal building shop next to it? That's not a dwelling unit?
Right, they would be separately regulated. And generally, too, a lot of home occupations, we would prohibit them using accessory buildings. It all has to be within the home, because again, you want the primary use of the property to be residential, and the business use be secondary. And when you start putting them in accessory buildings, that's generally when the nuisance aspects start coming into play.
Well, I want to back up to what we have here. The draft UDO proposes requiring accessory dwelling units to be on the same meter. I'm not understanding what difference that makes to us.
So we currently actually have that as a policy, and it really limits people just renting out their mother-in-law corridors to anybody, and creating a multifamily situation in a single-family residential neighborhood that also creates a lot of nuisance complaints when you have, you know, you cut your garage into two or three units, or two units, and then you have a lot of extra parking, and the, keeping the meter the same really cuts down on that external rental. But then we do see a lot, in the historic districts, we see units that were more purposely built to be rented to people outside of the primary residence, and so you don't see as many of those conflicts. But whenever someone converts a garage in a, you know, suburban-style neighborhood, we see a lot of the conflicts, because that wasn't really the original intention of that type of development.
Okay, thank you.
So just a question, when you get complaints about home-based business as things are right now, is it typically stemming from the amount of traffic and parking and things of that nature? I mean, is that really kind of the driving force for the complaints, or is it the existence of the business itself?
Outdoor storage of materials or any, you know, junk or material storage equipment, and then traffic, yes. So if we can somehow limit that type of activity, the businesses that create that activity, you know, a lot of times, there's a lot of home businesses, people probably don't even realize that there, maybe someone's running a business out of their home. And those are completely fine. We want a home to be like a home.
So if we did something along those lines under this, we would really be kind of focused on the traffic component, the parking component, rather than the existence of the business itself?
And storage.
Because I could think even of retail that isn't going to derive a lot of, you know, foot traffic, so to speak, or parking issues, that as you said, people don't even necessarily know they're there.
Retail gets also a little bit more into the separation and building code, so that's why I think we don't see a lot of retail businesses, because when you start mixing those types of occupancies, building code gets a lot more strenuous.
Yeah, yeah, you get into like mercantile and assembly-type uses than under building code. When you start slapping residential next to that, it starts triggering a lot of, a lot of things that cost a little more to comply. So it sounds like things like tattoo shops, we want to avoid, focus on appointment-based as being preferred. We do want to watch for things that can be appointment-based but still may be incompatible. Tattoo shops are typically appointment-based, so are salons, and some things like that. So I think we've got a good, good understanding there. So the next thing we're going to get into here is the overlay standards. I'm going to go through three slides here to kind of explain what we're talking about, and then pause. So we're going to be talking about three different types. We're going to talk about historic overlay districts, that's what you have in place now, except that y'all's operate a little differently. They're generally to protect for historical significance, but they also often come with additional oversight. They have usually design guidelines, oftentimes a historic preservation commission or board that approves designs and alterations and things like that. Y'all are not set up that way. Yours is set up to give you some alternative lot standards, to allow for some smaller lots, and to prohibit manufactured homes and off-premise signage. Seems to be the main areas of focus for y'all's. That is actually a lot more similar to a neighborhood conservation district that we see in other cities. Neighborhood conservation districts are a type of overlay, but they're self-imposed, if that makes sense. They're created, you know, through residential processes and petitioning, and usually they're to protect community character, but to do it in a way where they don't have to go and ask permission from a board. It's more prescriptive. These will often prohibit certain uses. In Victoria, that might mean that these are used as a tool to restrict commercial development encroaching within an established neighborhood, is how we can see that being used. And they can set standards that can be more lenient, more restricted, depending on the circumstances. And these can't be done by petition, they can also be enacted by the city, slightly different process. And then the last one is a design overlay district, and this is really just creating different design standards based on the location, much more straightforward. The example I'm going to talk about here is actually coming out of San Antonio. San Antonio has one of the best neighborhood conservation district programs probably in the US, and it just happens to be, you know, two hours up the road. And they use them as a tool where they have neighborhoods that could be historic, but they don't want to be a historic district, but they want certain protection. So they are used for specialized design standards most frequently. They don't tend to get into use standards in San Antonio, but they are able to. A good example, if you want to look one up, is the Beacon Hill Neighborhood Conservation District. It's just a particularly well-done one in San Antonio, to get a feel for that. So what we kind of want to understand here is a few questions. It's to kind of confirm what direction you want to go with in terms of your historic district protections. You know, do you want to see your historic districts expanded geographically? Do you want to get into the design review business, where you're looking at alterations to historic contributing structures? Do you want to be addressing appropriate design of infill via a board or commission like this? And then thinking about, what are the areas that you think might make sense for a neighborhood conservation district? We think a little bit about some of the conversations y'all've had about like the College Park neighborhood, for example, that might be a good fit. And then what are the uses that you would want to see maybe restricted in these types of spaces?
Do we have a design district? Did we finally pass that one out on the north side of town by Placido?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and that's the kind of thing, one of the things you're talking about?
Right.
Okay, so.
Well, I envision there being a little bit more teeth around our historic districts. And we have three designated districts right now, but aside from billboard placement or mobile home placement, that's the only restrictions there are. I just always felt like it was more of a pat on the back than really doing anything.
I guess to phrase it differently, what would you like it to do? You know, it's kind of a, what do you mean by more teeth?
Well, it's kind of like, what do you mean by protected?
Yeah.
I, I was going to say, I should talk to some people, and we've had conversations about houses being demolished that were in historic areas, and I understand that's sad to see happen. However, there's individual property owner rights as well, which, you know, you get into a historic area, and there's a charm to it, however, there's an overreaching, I don't want to see government overreach on a property owner's rights. I have no desire personally to pick a color of a house, or tell somebody what they can or cannot do with their home because it's in an area. And I live downtown, and I respect those that, we want to keep it there, but I hope that that's the individual property owner's, you know, choice to do that, because they love that area, versus being told to, because there are some implications that may come down the line that are, we don't want, financial from that regard. So I can understand maybe not having, besides RVs or mobile homes, I can understand signage, I can even understand maybe multifamily dwelling units, you know, in certain areas from a historic standpoint, but again, my personal, I don't want to see an overreaching, telling you what color your house has to be, or what you can or cannot do with your own property, but that's.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, you know, some protection, whatever that looks like, is favorable, but I don't want to get into another level of bureaucracy in terms of a committee that has to approve things, and I think what you're doing is you're driving up costs for that area, and if that's an area that we're looking at, our infill, then what does that look like? I mean, how do those two things balance if costs are going up and yet we're wanting people to infill into these same neighborhoods? Conceptually, I struggle with those two concepts being placed side by side, and I 100% support Dr. Young's point about, you know, if it's my property, I've got certain rights that are related to that, and, you know, respecting private owners' rights, I think, is important.
So I kind of hear y'all have this kind of battle between the concept of, you know, it's the property owners, their right to do what they want, but this desire for better outcomes. So another alternative path could be, do we want to look towards ways to incentivize preservation of historic structures without forcing the issue? Is that kind of closer to the Victoria way, from y'all's perception?
What would be an example of that?
An example might be that, you know, if you have a historic resources survey, it's usually what I start from. If the house is a contributing structure, you know, a medium or high preservation priority, then maybe they get leniency for use conversions, so that, you know, maybe it's a large, you know, 4,000-square-foot mansion, and they want to cut it up into a triplex in order to be able to fund the preservation of that building. They have a path to do that without having to worry about maybe the minimum lot size standards, for example. So you could take some paths like that would be a way to get there, or frankly, it's just on us to figure out what would be things that would motivate somebody to decide to keep and restore the building versus knock it down and start over.
I mean, we have a lot of that with the existing building code. I think the strongest part of potentially a historic district amendment would be the demolition, any demolition by neglect clause, but at the same time, code enforcement has been very, and Rick, Rick gets most of the credit, has been very proactive in our property maintenance, and if you've seen, there's been quite a few buildings, especially downtown, that's been a priority, that are being repaired because of code enforcement cases through the property maintenance. So property maintenance code really does the same as demolition by neglect code, but I think a demolition by neglect code is, sounds a little bit more palatable to the general public than property maintenance code.
It gives you a path to address it without going all the way to condemnation.
Julie, what percentage in your mind, some of these that come into disrepair, maybe before they're demolished, how many of these are actually vacant, and that's what's led to the deterioration of these? So then we get into a big thing about vacant lots and/or vacant buildings, and how do you change them from being vacant to getting into actually new property owners' hands that are actually going to do something with them? That's a whole different discussion, and what are the incentives to do in regards to that?
Yeah, most, I mean, 99% of the properties code enforcement takes are all vacant. They're, very, very rarely do they ever work a property that is occupied. But you also don't see occupied properties fall into the same state of disrepair typically as vacant property will.
That's what we often talk about in historic preservation, the biggest threat to a historic structure is vacancy. That's what leads them down a bad path, so. So it sounds like we need to find some way to kind of get this to an incentive sort of approach, and also look at the demolition by neglect. It might be thinking about vacancy registrations and stuff like that as well.
And quite honestly, some of it is.
Some cities do have vacant building ordinances that just create, you know, regulations around maintenance requirements for vacant structures. You have to register the vacant property, so there's a fee attached to that registration. So the idea is that if somebody has a vacant property and it's not being taken care of, you're hitting them in the pocketbook, you know, and hopefully encouraging them instead to invest that money or more money into their property so it looks better. So I mean, this is an issue, you know, that all cities deal with, and they've come up with creative ways on how to try and motivate folks.
And then the other side of it is the enforcement side. I mean, for a long time, our enforcement wasn't very robust, and there was an attitude of not taking the historic buildings, because we didn't, there wasn't, didn't want to generate the outcry of having them, you know, demolished, but at the same time, when a property gets to a certain point, the value's so low, they're so dilapidated, I mean, really, the choice is demolition is the only choice.
Is there a difference between old and historic?
Yes.
Actually, yeah.
Yes, there is.
Some of them are just old, and people call them historic because they were built a long time ago, but.
When you have a large district or area of just old, then that also can become historic, because you have a number of that example of, you know, shotgun houses, but just one shotgun house is generally just old.
Yeah, oftentimes, we'll see within a historic district, even if it's a very heavily regulated district, if a structure is a low preservation priority or considered non-contributing, it may be exempted from a lot of the standards. So you do typically see that type of thing set up there. So switching over from historic, are there parts of Victoria where you would like to see a different design treatment? You know, any particular corridors that come to mind that you'd like to see a step-up in quality of design or something like that?
Think of cities or communities that you probably have visited where, you know, your CVSs and Walgreens don't look like the CVSs and Walgreens in our community, because those communities have required that, you know, all their buildings be a certain brick, or, you know, whatever, to maintain a certain feel, you know, as you drive down a corridor or whatever. You know, those cities have these types of requirements, because they make the decision that they want that corridor to look a certain way, feel a certain way, as opposed to, you know, not having those.
Well, and taking it really to the other end of the extreme is that you'll see areas that are starting to maybe turn commercial, and you'll see hand-painted signs, and they're all, they'll all look different from each other, and it just really sort of advertises that the neighborhood is making a major change, or the commercial area is making a major change in the types of businesses. I mean, and that is appearance as well.
So it could be thinking about like, maybe it's just your major corridors that are inbound from other places.
And even ours, you know, the Placido Design District's a perfect example, you know, where, you know, utilities and certain things have to be underground, because we're being cognizant of the visual look of things, right? And the difference, you may recall those images that showed Novero, you know, with everything underground versus not, and just the big difference that it made in the visual appearance of that. So those are all things that could be included in something like this, not just in that area, but other areas, too.
You can't get there if you don't get started.
Right, right.
So to what extent, I guess it would be, to me, it would be a matter of degree from the standpoint that I'd want to make sure.
Can you move the mic a little closer?
I'd want to make sure that those type of regulations, if you will, on design or building requirements wouldn't deter particularly businesses that aren't here now from coming and locating, you know, in a commercial district. Not necessarily, you know, businesses we have now, but businesses that would be coming that we're trying to recruit to come here. I think I like the concept so long as we're not talking about something that would drive prices up so much that they go, well, I can build in a similar city for cheaper.
Sure, yeah, that makes sense. And usually, these are things like, you know, what you heard with like undergrounding of utilities, sometimes landscape enhancements, or sometimes it's just a list of, here's a list of things that would imply better quality. sometimes landscape enhancements, or sometimes it's just a list of, here's a list of things that would imply better quality. Pick three out of 12, you know, sort of thing. We definitely see that. What I think about is, you know, when I come here, I come from '87. And what makes me want to keep going, you know, down Main Street versus get on the whip to go around if I'm, say, going to Rockport? You know, and if you have a, if you can kind of convey some quality, it might encourage somebody to, instead of immediately making that turn, maybe go ahead and come into Victoria a little bit.
But how's that work with most of our major corridors built out? I mean, take Placido Beneditas out of it, where I think it's good to try the design district. Although, I do need to talk to you, Julie, sometime about some issues that landowners are saying they can't develop because of it.
Yeah, that's why we start looking at the non-conformities and when things get triggered. Because one of the things we want to do is try to create ways where you can make incremental progress, but not completely shut somebody down from being able to make a change. Because, you know, a little bit of improvement's better than no improvement. So, we look towards that non-conformity section for what would trigger the change and degrees of change and how you make progress. That's not an unusual situation. We run into this in a lot of built-out cities. All right, we got back good direction there. This next area is getting kind of into the dimensional requirements.
Did y'all get what you needed for that?
We actually, I think...
Do you think for neighborhood conservation, we didn't really touch on that, did we?
Oh, we didn't discuss neighborhood conservation. Does that neighborhood conservation district sound like something y'all are interested in?
You gotta go back to slide though.
Yeah, try, there it goes, just thinking about it.
And the thought too on neighborhood conservation is that maybe some of our historic districts that are more neighborhood-based, like College Park or Nine Rivers or the residential part of downtown, could be converted to neighborhood conservation districts. And then that may make it easier to adopt more regulations in our historic districts if our historic district is more just geared towards our, you know, commercial historic downtown.
The creation of the neighborhood conservation district is different too, though.
It could be by council, but it would be an either or. Either council adopts it or it could be petition-based. So, Castle Hills could petition or council could create a movie either.
And the key difference is there's some state law changes so that if you're creating new historic districts in the future, it requires a higher level of consent. And that's based on the assumption that historic districts have a lot of regulations on them. Y'all's don't. So, it may be more appropriate to look at converting some of those and just having it be a more prescriptive type of standard. And then you could also, you know, turn your demolition provisions into something based on age of structure and evaluation process that could apply anywhere in the city for preserving historic structures that might make it actually easier to administer.
I'm not sure I fully understand the difference between saying something's a historic district and then saying, "Well, this is a neighborhood conservation district." Where do those two diverge?
So, I would describe a neighborhood conservation district, I mean, you can have like setback requirements and our established building line requirements or square footage based off of, you know, like for example, a teardown in, you know, Castle Hills and being replaced with a mansion or manufactured home going in there. You know, none of those are compatible with the existing type of houses. So, it could limit the rebuild to be something that is compatible with the existing neighborhood. And then it also can function basically as a single-family residential district where you're limiting, you know, changes. And that's why it would be petition-based primarily so that you don't have that conversion to non-compatible.
I think part of a key difference too is understanding how an outside developer views these. An outside developer, when they hear historic district, they will presume that it is a high regulatory something with a board that they have to go get approval from, that they may or not get approved. So, there are developers, high-quality developers, that will avoid that process and not even ask the question because they're just like, "Oh, I don't want to be in that." And so, they'll walk away and go look somewhere else. Y'all are so different in that regard that you might want to think about this different language and different process because if they see neighborhood conservation district and they'll see it's prescribed, they'll look it up and they'll see, "Oh, it's prescriptive standards." It's not subject to, you know, the whims of a board or commission. It's, you know, a very defined set of things and they know, "Okay, I checked these boxes, I get approved." Developers are more comfortable with that. So, sometimes it's how you're presenting to an outsider too.
So, we need to call it actually what it is?
Yeah.
Speak the same language.
Yeah.
And those would only be put in place, I'm assuming, on neighborhoods that don't have deed restrictions that already cover these things?
I mean, a lot of deed-restricted neighborhoods don't necessarily have strong enforcement too without HOA. So, I mean, it would be applicable to any neighborhood in Victoria that wanted to apply for it or the council, you know, felt was appropriate to designate as.
So, this is what we can continue to work with and include that in the updated drafts. It might help y'all to actually see it on paper and then kind of make the call of, "Are you comfortable with it?" So, we can work with that. This next portion is looking at, you know, the development standards and, again, we're going to talk about triggers at the next meeting, but it's looking at how you measure and things like that and how you build out a site. So, the, really the first key portion of this is your parking requirements. There we go. And we're really not making big wholesale changes. A lot of what we're changing here is how we communicate the standards and do it in a way that's easier to understand. And also creating some surfacing requirements for improved surfaces for parking. This is, again, helping you with, you know, nuisance issues, things like how often you're having to run a street sweeper. It's connected back to how are these parking lots designed? And sometimes even the construction standard of them. One of the things we've observed is lots of parking lots that maybe have a few potholes or two, things like that, that you can prescribe the standards a little more directly. But this contains all the stuff about design requirements, different angles, what it means for aisle width and things like that. And also queuing requirements for stacking. This is for drive-throughs and aspects like that. You'll see something that goes with this as well, which is the stacking required for a large parking lot before it goes onto a street. This is basically so that you don't have people that are turning in, immediately trying to turn across, backing up onto the street from time to time. Landscaping, just some minor changes. This applies to your commercial development, some redevelopment scenarios. We're sticking with that 10% requirement for landscaping. We like using this percentage because it gives flexibility of design. But we are adding a requirement for a landscape buffer along the roadway. And that's mainly to help with that kind of gateway feeling coming in. It also helps with issues like headlight glare into the street, things like that. So, you'll find information about, you know, plans required, what are appropriate materials. A really important aspect of this though is standards for maintenance. That, once the landscape is installed, it has to be maintained in compliance with the code. This is trying to deal with some of the issues we've heard mentioned about not being able to enforce, you know, after a site is built. We're trying to create that environment where it's a little bit easier to do that.
Could I ask a question about the standards? I notice there are some places I'll pull out of a parking lot and it's landscaped. They've got a giant hedge, right, and you can't even see. If somehow in the standards, it's got to be so you can see when you pull out of a driveway.
You're talking about like internal site triangles where you can, yes, see around corners? That usually accompanies this type of standard. A lot of times we actually have that as a standalone because it can apply both on internal driveways, but also sometimes it varies based on, is it a driveway intersecting a street? Is it a street intersecting a street? And what we require for corner clear space and what height is permissible. And usually, that's what the formula will take is that landscaping can't exceed, oftentimes we see 32 inches as a height standard in that type of circumstance. We also look at fences and screening, just some minor changes. Mainly looking at when is fencing required for compatibility and adjacency? And also, what are the materials that are acceptable? One of the things you could think about with this is whether you want to try to incentivize some better approaches for this, especially like on residential subdivision boundary fences. A lot of times those are prone to wind blow, getting knocked down. And it's hard to get a whole line of people of, you know, 12 houses in a row to take care of that back fence. So, if you can make it a higher quality fence to start with, maybe you can avoid it.
What about PVC fencing?
Sorry, what?
What about PVC fencing?
PVC fencing? Alexis, do you know if we allow PVC fencing? Current draft, we don't have that in there.
I think it should be in there.
You want that? All right.
Why does it say where...
I don't even know what that looks like.
PVC, it's like a vinyl fencing.
Probably got it at my house.
Oh, I see it now, okay.
No, it's a very durable fence. Wind-rated and everything.
I've never called it that. Don't ask me what I'd call it because I couldn't even tell you.
Probably a plastic fence.
The second point says screening fence required where multifamily and non-residential is adjacent. I'm still trying to figure out, is this presentation just things that you're adding? I mean, why does that not say single-family residential as well as multifamily?
This is mainly looking where you've got multifamily, because you already have some requirements for...
So, this is something new?
This is looking at some changes we're making.
I just didn't want you to take it out.
Yeah, you would have a similar, in some cases, you'd actually have a higher standard for residential. A lot of times we'll see a landscaping component with that for residential.
Before, this is probably for Mr. Garza, it may be for Julie too. How would that apply to Texas concrete?
Well...
Which street is residential?
There would, whatever changes go into effect, I mean, there would be, you know, the grandfathering piece and the non-conforming use component. So, a lot of this stuff we're talking about today would for the most part apply for new developments.
Except for when it happens when they have a site plan that enacts that and then...
Correct, correct, correct.
We currently have a screening fence requirement because of, they're basically a lay-down yard. And it's not concrete, they would be required. The ordinance currently, if something triggers a site plan, would require a full wood screening fence around their entire perimeter.
Yeah, so they're already required to have the screening fence?
Correct, but that says wood or masonry or not. Not chain link with a tarp.
Right, yeah, we typically don't see...
Yeah.
They haven't triggered a site plan?
I understand well, they may... May not have, but I'm looking to the future that something will occur down the line, that there are yards that are next to residential, that this will become an issue, so... Just asking the question.
You'd have to include junkyards too.
But you're right in terms of, you know, if it triggers a site plan or something like that, then at that point, like any other trigger, there'd be compliance with the updated codes at that time.
And that's an existing code today.
Right, that they're required to have the screen fence.
So, if the city were to have to build the fence in the future along their property line and this was already enacted, it would have to be wood or masonry?
We should, we should already do it according to our current screening fence requirement requires that it be at a minimum a wood privacy fence. So, that's already in our code today.
Okay.
Right. But we would do it, we would do it to be consistent.
Well, we should do it because to meet our code, which our code today requires it. If it's against residential or it's a lay-down yard, you know, if it meets the applicable triggers. Which, this is really not any different except saying between multifamily and commercial, you have to have a screening, the non-residential, the commercial has to put up a screening fence.
Yeah, and I think in our current code, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, but I think the reason why, you know, you have things like chain link fence with, you know, flats or a mesh or whatever, it's because the current code allows our planning director give...
No, actually, our current code, I amended like four years ago when I became director, so it's not that old of a code, which is why we have a lot of non-conforming. For the lay-down yards, the buffer between residential and commercial is a longstanding code and that's why you do see a lot of wood fences between residential and commercial. But the lay-down yard requirement is actually a fairly new code. I think it was about four years ago that we amended that.
And that can be chain link?
No.
No?
No, I do have the authority to reduce it. It right now states it has to be wood.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, and I can reduce it, but I've only reduced it in one option for Glass Doctor on Airline because they did chain link, but they planted... No vines, sorry, yeah, vines to grow up against the fence. And I always recommend that with the shrubbery and the landscaping, just nobody ever takes me up on it.
All right. The other type of screening we think about is your screening for refuse containers, for dumpsters. We're making some minor changes to this, but also looking at when is it triggered? Because one of the things we want to do is try to encourage these dumpster enclosures with change of use. That's for a couple of reasons. One is that... They don't like that idea either. It is to deal with issues like illegal dumping so that these are more secure, but also helps with litter control, things like that, and just visual to hide it. So, it's not just, you know, kind of out there as an eyesore as much.
So, if we went along this route, would waste management then be opening the gates?
That'd be correct.
The drivers do not like to get down and open the gates.
Tough.
And I've had a lot of complaints in those, so I don't know how you're going to do that.
Yeah, and we know that the companies have an extra fee for the driver to do that. And so, one of the issues that we run into is that the gates just stay open. So, even though they're there, they're kept open and so the, yeah, the container is still visible from at least that one side because the gates just remain open. And it's, you know, I guess more convenient for the company to not have a driver get down and it's more convenient for the business owner because they're not paying that extra fee.
This is what I find a little, it's a little interesting for y'all. This is the only city we've encountered this conversation. And because most cities have taken this step, the refuse enclosures with the gates. So, that might be a further conversation to have on that, to understand kind of what is the fundamental issue there and if there's alternatives for that.
Well, I'm for it, but I have a question. It says to obtain a new certificate of occupancy. Could you clarify what you mean by that? If I have a strip center and I don't have, I have a vacancy, do I have to get a new certificate of occupancy and enclose my...
I couldn't hear the first part of your question, I can't hear you.
What's a certificate of occupancy? And if you have a business and say the person moves out and you rent to somebody else, do you have to get a new certificate of occupancy? And then does it force you to...
Right, does the re-getting of a certificate of occupancy trigger the new requirements, basically your question?
Yes.
Yes, so typically now, you go through a commercial-only inspection if you are a new business going into an existing commercial. And so, our fire marshal's office inspects, our building, permits inspection does an inspection and we give that business owner a list of building, your fire code requirements or pre-treatment requirements they need to open that new business. So, in that case, where we would have the ordinance trigger a dumpster enclosure if there's not already a dumpster enclosure. If it's the same type of business, we have what's called a name change process where they're just changing the utilities over. We're making sure they're still in compliance with everything and it would not trigger the dumpster. So, it's when you're making a change to the use of the property is when you would, the dumpster enclosure would be triggered. I want to concede on three sides. The worst part is the dumpster enclosures that migrate out, get put in the front... get put in the front parking lot, get put in the right-of-way. You know, even with the three sides, you have a designated spot for that dumpster. And dumpster enclosures at the heart of it prevent wind-blown litter and then they are huge on aesthetics of your city.
And that might be what emerges as a solution here is that we're doing three-sided enclosures.
I was gonna say, I think I've seen that, but the three-sided enclosure is good if the opening is facing toward the building where it's not visible. But if the opening is facing toward the street, then the three-sided has destroyed, you know, it's made it better for the building maybe. And it depends on the size of the lot, whether you can do a three-sided enclosure and still have enough room for the truck to get in.
Yeah, and could look at, so we could look at like orientation of those. Could also look at alternatives where if you do some different things with site landscaping, whether this enclosure is still necessary. Like, for example, if you're able to do a lot of landscaping right on the edge of the lot, then maybe that enclosure isn't essential because the dumpster itself's not visible. So there could be some paths like that that could work here.
I just got a question, how long do we want to go on this topic?
Max an hour and a half.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah.
We only got about two things left, we're almost done.
Okay, just making sure.
And there may not be a lot of conversation on these. This is, one of the things we're adding is you do have lighting standards that are contained within building codes. We're adding some regulations about shielding and cutoff. This is dealing with glare issues where if you have, you know, for example, residential next to commercial, you end up with light glare coming in even if it's unintentional. This also makes your lighting a lot more efficient in terms of the light is lighting the ground, it's not lighting the sky. So this is something we've recommended for inclusion. These get triggered at different points based on the intensity of the lighting involved. And then also access management standards. This is a new section, new content, and it's really providing the vehicle for requiring cross-access when you have things that are getting platted together and driveway placement and separations and getting that all into one place. What we put into your code for your proposal is kind of the best practice that we've worked with a lot. And it really helps with your roads run a little bit more efficiently, helps you deal with things like your medians, stuff like that, so that you're able to function in that way as well. It also looks at, this is where you find your standards for site distance and you'll also find standards related to traffic impact analysis. And when that gets triggered, so that way you can make the operational improvements with the project as needed. You also find your internal storage, this is what I was talking about, for stacking, for vehicles waiting to exit or to come into a site so that people get off the street before they're having to figure out what their next move is. And we also have added a section for signs in here. What we have done is, this has been significantly altered and this goes back to content neutrality issues. We want to make sure that your sign ordinance doesn't really care what is written on the sign. It's all about time, place, and manner. Does establish different permanent signs and sizes based on the roadway type. When you don't have zoning, roadway becomes the next logical tool to use for that. I would actually argue it's a better tool. And so it varies based on the level of street using your thoroughfare plan. So if it's an arterial, it's a larger standard, a highway, a larger standard. But if it's on a local street, has a more restrained requirement. One of the questions we had is how do you feel about billboards? The current draft actually has a prohibition on billboards across the board. Are y'all comfortable with that or would you like that to be maybe just limited to certain areas?
I'm comfortable with that. I'd like billboards to disappear.
Well, remember, it wouldn't impact the billboards that are up now. Right.
I'd like them to disappear too.
Well, you can always put in something where if you, like railroad crossings, right?
Yep.
You could also issue a variance, couldn't you? You're talking about the billboard on top, that is actually a billboard with Lamar, I think it's Lamar.
No, no, if you need to like convert one to a digital, you need to take down three others.
Oh.
Yeah, like exchange programs, we've seen those.
Right, like if you want to add one, you gotta eliminate X, Y, and Z or whatever.
We could do something like that.
I could see that'd be beneficial where areas that don't have the high-traffic count that they once had.
Right, and it would force them to figure out which are the least...
Profitable, well, they're probably already paid for at that point, but...
So it sounds like there might be some interest in an allowance for digital billboards with a buyout provision. Where they swap out five standard for one digital, something like that. Alright. Other thoughts on that or is y'all, that's not like something...
Just depending on where. I mean, that's still...
Depending on what?
On where also. I guess people aren't gonna want to put one in a places without a lot of traffic, so...
We currently have a separation standard with billboards, so there's not a lot of areas left where people can put new billboards. But I do think we have a lot of these old small ones, like the one in front of 700 Main, that if, you know, a billboard company wanted to come in and do a digital billboard, if we could get rid of some of those, you know, small ones that are not in high-traffic areas, it might be a really good program.
Yeah, that's how you kind of get to your clutter, your sign clutter issue. It's those types really, not the giant ones.
Do we have protections in the downtown area to not have a digital billboard there?
Yeah, that's already in your...
Historic districts can't have them.
Placido Beneficent Design District or the Historic District or no billboard districts.
The only one that's really controversial in the past was the one at Five Points, but it met every standard that we had.
And there's not been any topic or discussion in regards to that. You know, we had a long talk about billboards in the past. Actually, like your idea of the swap program. I think it makes a lot of sense because there's certainly value in advertising. But the swap program, I would get on board with that.
And we would make this prohibition on our ETJ as well, which is really where we see a lot of our dilapidated or billboards right on top of each other. If you think about, you know, the 59, Business 59 coming in from Telfenner, this would be very beneficial, I think, to that area too.
Right. And it would put us sort of up to par with just where other cities are. I mean, this has become one of those, it's just become a standard. Yeah, it's become a standard, you know, where you just don't allow billboards. So this would be an example of us, I guess, catching up to that trend.
Alright. And the last thing we have is just some development standards for off-street storage. Mainly just some minor changes to existing requirements, not big wholesale changes. And then some regulations for off-street vehicle storage that you don't have currently that we've plugged in to deal with that particular issue. Otherwise, that consists of the module.
Actually, I do have a question about this because I'm not sure if we're addressing this here or where we should address it. But I have some friends that are on a curve in their subdivision and there's a green space next to it. So that curve is where some adjoining owners are storing their flatbed low trailers. And I don't think there's anything that we've got in the code right now that says they can't do that.
So is that occurring on a public street?
Yes.
So we would usually see that addressed through like a right-of-way ordinance?
Well, I mean, the police department has gone out and marked the tires and, you know, all they have to do is pull the trailer out and put it right back again. Because then it's moved.
Okay, you got it.
Wouldn't that be a lay-down yard then?
Well, I think that our Homebase Business section...
That's probably your relation.
Might help some of that, it wouldn't help all of it. But I think that that's the biggest complaints we get is, you know, like someone operating a lawn care business out of their house and the trailers are being, you know, and vehicles are being parked on the street. So if we are able to reduce those types of non-compatible businesses and neighborhoods, we might solve, now that won't solve everything, but I do think that might cut down some of those complaints.
Alright. Good deal. That gives us the next steps, what happens next? So we talked about parkland dedication already, so we're good there. So our other, so what's gonna happen next is we're gonna make some edits to this first module. We've also already started drafting the second set of standards. These are gonna be focused on subdivision regulations, your plat processes basically, flood damage prevention types of standards. Parkland dedication is what we'll be coming back with in this. And then also looking at that enforcement and non-conformities provisions. That's gonna be part of this next grouping of effort. The only other item that we had as a closure item was to get a feel for you of when we have projects that are existing and you want to see them improve, what is the threshold that y'all think of for when somebody should have to comply with some requirements and then all requirements? That would be what we'd like to close with.
I'd say it depends on where it is. If it's downtown, I think there needs to be some type of mechanism that everybody can understand on what's acceptable and what's not. Because some of those buildings are hard to modify and it's a special fire district and it's got some unique characteristics that don't always lend itself well to comparing to the other parts of the city.
Sure.
So...
So maybe it sounds like it could vary based on whether it's a historic district? Anything else come to mind?
Well, we had an issue, and I don't know if this is exactly what you're talking about, where someone added on a square footage to a building, the Harbor Freight, which triggered sidewalks to be installed all the way around it. So they got away with not doing Crestwood because it's gonna get rebuilt anyway. In the very old, they had to run it all the way down the entire length of the building, but they only added 5,000 square feet to a, I don't know, 200,000 square foot building? And so if you look at it on a ratio of what you're doing as a percentage of square footage changes, that should determine what...
Another example might be someone taking, like UHB, of course, that's not a good example because they're exempt, but they completely redid a Town and Country Mall and weren't required to do any site. If that had been not a university, not an entity of the state, let's say it was a commercial business, since they only touched the building, there wouldn't have been any site improvements required. But they put considerable amount of investment back into that building. So you have the flip side too. So maybe an investment threshold?
So you think like a 20% expansion might be a threshold?
We have a, we did put in one for the sidewalks, I can't remember what we put in. Maybe we just kind of follow that?
50%?
I think so. We put in a threshold for sidewalks.
So sidewalks currently, if it's curb and gutter, it's required. If it's open ditch, we have the ability to do the sidewalk covenant and agreement.
No, there's a percentage that we put in there. There was something that triggered it and something that didn't.
I don't... I'm not sure that that's in there like that.
I think it was proposed, but I don't think it ever went in there.
Really?
You, I think you brought it up, but I don't think it ever was...
I mean, we have to factor in that we're an old city and we've developed over time and people have gotten variances, our rules have changed. And the city continues to bear the expense of most of this improvement because of things that we've given up in the past. And when somebody's doing an improvement, they're getting the benefit of the improvement, the city protections. And, I mean, we just, we have to be aware of it from that standpoint too.
Right, but sometimes the costs of providing the improvements aren't justified by like the additional rent charged for that 5,000 square feet. You're never gonna cover your cost of the sidewalk. You can't lump it into a revised lease agreement with all your people in the building.
Right.
And so that's where the rub is.
Yeah, because unfortunately, the sidewalk should have been there a long time before.
We probably had a regulation where it allowed the parking lot to be used as a sidewalk.
So what we can probably do then is we can put together kind of our instinct on what we think makes sense here and that'll be something that y'all can respond to at the next meeting.
Okay.
Good. That's all I had, if there's any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Welcome home.
Yeah.
I was gonna be here.
You wanna just continue rocking and rolling?
Yes, you can get up as needed and go...
Okay.
Is the water back on to the building?
Yes, it's back on.
Alright. Oh, very good. Alright, C2, American Rescue Plan Act Funding Allocation Update, Mr. Wesley Yanishek.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to present some recommendations to some changes in the allocations to the ARPA categories that were presented back in March this year. So I did hand this out to you, so it might be a little bit easier to look at on paper. These first two columns, you might vaguely remember as the categories in the allocations that were approved earlier this year. Then I have in the change column, anything in red, of course, is a decrease to that funding recommendation and in green is an increase. So first off, we have the broadband infrastructure. We had approved $3 million back in March. We're recommending moving $1.5 million to the Public Safety Building and $1.5 million to Economic Development, more specifically the Deleon Plaza Project. The next item would be the Public Safety Building. We're recommending adding $2 million to that. Again, $1.5 million from broadband, $250,000 from the Visitor Center, and then $250,000 from community grants. In the Economic Development category, there's two projects that we made changes to. Deleon Plaza, we added the $1.5 million from broadband. And as I just mentioned, $250,000 from the Visitor Center went to Public Safety. And then in Community Grants, we moved $250,000 to Public Safety from one of those entities. The other item that's not really a change at this time is just a change from March because it was approved in the fiscal '23 budget was that unallocated amount of $158,000 went towards the Duck Pond. You'll also see these changes mentioned throughout Gilbert's CIP presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have right now.
And I don't know if you said this or not, but the utility project section of it didn't change. We do plan, just as a quick update to y'all, at our workshop in March for you to receive a detailed update on the SCADA engineering project and the upgrade of Phase 1 as well as the wastewater assessment, both of which Garber is doing for us. And so March will be a good update for some high-level projects that are being worked on. And we'll make sure to also provide an update then on the INI study as well. So you can expect to hear about those at our workshop in March. Some of the others, you know, are consistent with some of the conversations that we've had, you know, over time. You know, obviously through the work that Derek's put in, through the Broadband Commission, you know, has allowed us the ability to redirect, you know, that money that we had set aside thinking that we might need to build our own network or facilitate a middle mile or whatever. And so that has helped obviously some of these other projects that we need some additional funding for. As Wesley mentioned, when Gilbert goes through his financial update on the CIP, you'll hear throughout his presentation similar message. But we wanted to first show you on paper where we stood with ARPA, so when Gilbert talks about it, it sort of connects the dots and makes a little more sense. Because in order to fund some of the projects that Gilbert will talk about, we need this reallocation that we're sharing with you today. And we haven't talked about it in public since March, so we felt it was an appropriate time to update you on it publicly.
Is that the right use name, Public Safety Headquarters Land Acquisition?
We can change the title of that, just Public Safety Headquarters Project in general.
Please, because I would say that there's money left over if it was just land acquisition.
Agree.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Obviously, we are talking about funding in CIP for the next hour or so, so at any point if you have questions about any of that, obviously feel free to ask. Okay, well then we'll slide over into the next item, Mayor, and I'll introduce it if it's okay with you.
Sure.
But in the same light, we felt it was appropriate to provide an update for you on the City VG MIT funding allocation that we are supposed to get from the Regional Planning Commission or via the Regional Planning Commission. I know some of you have been very involved with that conversation from serving on that board. And part of Gilbert's presentation also accounts for some CIP changes that also are dependent on us receiving this allocation and shifting some projects to be funded from this allocation. And so to provide an update before we get into the specifics of those reallocations, we felt it was appropriate to ask Katie, our grants administrator, to provide... we felt it was appropriate to ask Katie, our grants administrator, to provide you an update, um, although I'm not sure how much of an update it'll be. Uh, but that's not our fault, for the record, that is not our fault.
It's a moving target.
Yeah, that's right. But anyway, Katie?
Well, what I can tell you is, um, what changed from the last time we talked about this, which is effectively the amount that the city is, um, is projected to be allocated. Um, if you can, oh, yeah, that's... So what happened was, um, after the first, um, method of distribution was proposed by the COG, they received a lot of public response. And in response to the, the public comments that they received, they came up with a, a basically revised method of distribution that factored in some other things. Um, but what I wanted to mention here was that, um, the HUD most impacted and distressed is kind of an important point. Um, that's an area that's defined by HUD based on some FEMA data and concentrated damage, but what it determines is the percentage of allocation for those zip codes. So for instance, during disaster relief, the CDBG disaster relief that we got after Hurricane Harvey, the first round of CDBG funding, that HUD MIT area was meant to get 80%. Um, for, for the MIT though, it's 50%. Um, so in any case, the first round of method of distribution that CDBG came up with, we were going to be allocated 40,784,000. Um, so what's changed is they came up with some different options. They basically, they reduced that HUD MIT percentage from 80 to either 53.1 or in the next slide, I think it's 47. The first option, um, reduced the city's allocation to 27,068,400. And it was the same for either one. So the difference between option one and two here really quickly is just that alloc, the minimum allocation of 1 million or 500,000. And that had much bigger effect on some of the other, uh, smaller cities and counties that are within the COG in terms of the amount they would be allocated. It, it had a big effect on ours from a global sense, but between those two options, it didn't have, but whether they got a million or 500,000, it didn't change ours. Um, and so then on option three and four, um, that, uh, reduced the city's, um, allocation even further. I have 20,200,700 for option three and this is kind of, oh, I didn't go, oh, I'm sorry. I, I forgot mine. Sorry.
Wait a minute. Let us read it then.
Okay.
Yep. That's right.
So this was the one that, where the city was gonna get 27,68,000 for either option.
And whose options are these?
Just go one more.
Yeah, so.
Whose options are these?
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of talking about it like council knows what you're talking about. And, and other than the two council members that serve on that board, the others aren't familiar with even how these options came to be. So we need to elaborate a little more on that.
These, these options were proposed at the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission after they took the feedback from everybody. And basically, they got a lot of feedback from small towns and rural counties.
Right.
They want more money.
So their process was, we're gonna come up with a formula to come up with an allocation. That's when we got the notice that we were gonna receive 40 million dollars. And they went through a public input process, um, as part of that. And as Mark suggested, um, all the smaller communities, you know, felt like not enough money was going their way. Because our region as a whole received 80 something million dollars. And so we ourselves were gonna get almost half of the entire allocation for the whole Regional Planning Commission, um, region. The county, I can't remember how much the county was gonna get. Um, I think it was 17?
I don't remember.
I can't remember, but between the city and the county, if we were to add those up, I mean, it was gonna be significant amount. And so the, the smaller, uh, communities, you know, provided input, um, and they, in essence, um, from my understanding, you know, put that pressure on the Regional Planning Commission to come up with some additional options that would spread out that money in ways that they would be more fair. Um, the original allocation was very heavily based off of population, um, and that's how they had come up with the original allocation. I couldn't tell you exactly what their rationale was for the options that they came up with, um, but they came up with options nonetheless.
The, the original allocation was based on that 80% HUD MIT, uh, zip codes plus the population and LMI percentage. So what these options are modifying is that percentage for the HUD MIT, uh, zip codes. In addition to, um, on options, so option one and two reduced just the percentage, still limited the considerations to population and LMI. Options three and four there reduce the, um, the percentage to 53.1%, but they also consider social vulnerability index and FEMA damage assessment. So there were other weighted factors in that second method of distribution where they came up with these four different options.
Adjustment of distribution.
There's been, there was supposed to be a meeting today. It was the third meeting on this issue. The first time this issue came to Golden Crescent, they had never sent out an agenda, so nobody had any idea what the options were. It was postponed to a second meeting where the options were voted on. They voted, they decided to throw out option two. They voted on option one, three, and four. It really was not a real vote, it was a straw vote. Option four got seven votes and the other two got six votes. Um, I was on a Zoom from North Carolina on the top of a mountain and I heard them talk it, they were rationalizing, the little places were rationalizing, well, it's, we're just taking it from the big guys, they got a big tax base, it's no big deal. Um, the meeting was not, they never was voted on a majority for a particular option, so the meeting made no sense. It was actually a person from Molton who objected to the meeting, so we were supposed to have a third meeting today. Um, I got ahold of people who were not at the last meeting, like Gary Burns and Jeff Tunnel, and I talked to 10 people on the phone to try to get them to vote for option number one. It came to my attention, Gary says, well, I don't think they posted the meeting in time. And they posted the meeting three hours late, so the meeting could not be held today. Uh, they've rescheduled the meeting for Monday, but I've noticed that all the letters that have come in, a lot of people can't attend the meeting. I, if I had to look at it right now, if we voted on options, option four would get nine votes, option three would get six votes, seven votes. Option one, I convinced some people, would get eight votes. Now, the difference between the options is, and that's not what we're gonna discuss, they, they sent it to the GLO, but it's, it, it's not legal because the majority didn't decide on an option. It was a sort of a popularity thing. So we have to have another meeting. I've sent letters and I've asked Gary Burns, I've asked anybody to send a letter to say, let's postpone the meeting till January because there's no rush on this money from the GLO. They don't need to know right away. And we need, we need, like Gary Burns can't attend. He's gonna be traveling on Monday at 10:30. That's a vote we lose. Mr. Tunnel, he's out of town too, and I think he's traveling. So I'm trying to get it changed to where we have a meeting in January where we can, where we have a chance of getting the 27 million. I'm gonna tell you right now, we're not gonna get the 40 million. It's gonna be 27 million or less. But, um, I spent all day yesterday trying to convince people to vote for option number one. But first we have to decide, and the difference between, option three, people are going for option three that are small cities. Because the small cities in option three benefit, they get a minimum of a million dollars. But the counties suffer.
Right.
The counties are going for option four. The trouble with the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission is it's populated by rural, they have more votes than Victoria does. Hallsville has four, Hallsville has three cities and a county that vote. We have one county representative and Josie and I are the representatives. And it's that way for DeWitt. DeWitt has a bunch of votes, Jackson has a bunch of votes. So the votes on the Golden Crescent are from the small towns and the rural communities. So they have a lot of sway and they want our money. And hey, I understand, if I was them, I'd want our money too. But, um, I was prepared to give a speech about, um, listen, we have poverty, we have the population, we have problems just like they do. And, and we were supposed to get 40 originally, and I really would like them to vote for option number one. We're not gonna get the 40 million dollars.
What also makes it interesting is that the purpose of this money originally came from HUD.
Exactly.
For the purpose due to the fact that Hurricane Harvey to mitigate. Somehow it went from that to this.
Right. And I think that's an, that's an important point I'm gonna make because, and she made the point about the money was, they decided where the money should go on where there was the worst problems and they decided that. But all these people think that everybody who, who has a little city, of course, their problems are their problems and they got a lot of problems and they don't know what everybody else's problems are. And they want the money, I understand, but I'm gonna fight for the 27 million.
Is there anything, Mark, that any of us can do to help you in that fight?
Yes, like Jeff Tunnel, you need to call him and tell him he has to attend the meeting and he has to vote for option number one.
Who is Jeff Tunnel?
He's, uh.
He's the head of Gulf Ben.
Gulf Ben. He has a vote.
Oh.
Um, I'm trying to get the meeting changed because there's two votes that we won't have if they have the meeting on Monday at, at 10 o'clock.
Because it's taking place the same time as the county commissioners meeting.
Yeah.
So I think it won't happen. But, um, Gary wasn't gonna be back for the county, he's in Las Vegas. I've talked to him, I don't know how many times.
Convention.
So Blumenton's.
Move the meeting to Vegas is what I'm hearing.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah.
But anyway, um, and Josie called some people and, uh...
And I couldn't sway them, they said they wanted three.
No, and I'm having a hard time swaying them too, but what they, the small cities, it stood their advantage to vote for either one or three. So if three's not gonna be in the mix, they need to vote for one. And we already have eight, I, I can count on eight votes. And if we could get some of those votes, we could get the majority and get option one. But that's not how it's gonna be discussed at the next meeting. It's, first we're gonna discuss if it's the 100,000 or the 50,000 for cities. But if we go to the 100,000, that automatically throws out option four, which will, that will be interesting.
So Mark, um, is the process, once Golden Crescent Regional Planning makes their recommendation to GLO, is there then another public comment period on how that allocation is?
Yes.
We believe so, yes.
Yes. It will be two weeks.
So should we start drafting something already?
Yes.
It would be a good idea.
Making the case that this is a, like Mr. Anya said, this is a HUD program.
Right.
And as such, it should stay at 80% and, and recognize where the money is coming down from.
And the, and the more we send in, the better.
What makes it more difficult, uh, confusing for me is that this money to spend on your mitigation plan that you submitted to TEDM. I wonder how many of these people have it planning place.
That's another, that's another good point.
No, please, the more, the more we can send in, the better.
Yeah.
I want this money.
Right, my last comment on it was just gonna be that, uh, yes, there will be, whatever is, is voted on or not voted on, whatever happens on Monday, there will be another public comment period.
Okay.
And Mark, um, or Mr. Garza, could you, uh, keep the council abreast of the meeting? I'm sure we already get it somewhere, but the Golden Crescent, whenever it is gonna be held and...
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there a public comment section in the meetings?
Yes, there is.
Yeah. And Monday it's at, well, as of now, as of now, it's still taking place.
Right.
And it would be at 10 a.m. at their offices.
Right.
Don't ask me for the address, I have no idea.
And I've asked people to, uh, send letters to say, you know, it's too short of notice, let's have it in January when people can attend. And we'll see how that goes. I know I've sent a letter, I've asked Josie to send a letter, I've asked Gary Burns to send a letter, I asked Gary Burns to have, uh, Mr. Tunnel send a letter. So we'll see.
I'm gonna send it to Chair.
And, and other people have already sent in that they can't attend, that even from...
There was very few that were saying they were going to come in.
Is, are you still the chair?
No.
No?
She's the past, past president.
Past president.
Yeah.
I wish she was the president.
I know. Me too.
Okay, well, uh, this is a big deal, um, because as you'll find out in the next presentation, um, some of the shifting around of funds that we're attempting to do is dependent on us having access to these funds to make everything work. Um, so I guess as you hear Gilbert's presentation, just keep that in mind, as well as the ARPA update. And so I'll just transition to Gilbert's update, um, which is the CIP update. Him and Ken will talk to teammate and I'll obviously chime in as well.
Alright.
At several points.
Thank you. And so, Mayor left, had a comment about the wrapping up thing, but I won't do it.
That's why he left?
I know. Alright. That way. Wrong way. Okay. I know you, I know she got up, you can't blame me, I know, it's the operator. Okay. Fiscal '23 CIP. Currently we have 45.45 million dollars in total project for '23. The little stars or asterisk is what we're, staff are proposing to do some changes within those categories. With that said, there's seven of them. Let's get through.
And really quick, Gilbert, um, do you have in the presentation, you don't have going through this, right?
No, that's just...
But, right, but for your information, um, staff did hand out, uh, detailed update on where we are with the projects in this fiscal year. Um, we didn't think it would be necessarily needed to go through them line item by line item because there really wasn't any one of them that is significantly, you know, like not happening or just...
Can't hear?
Off the timeline or whatever, everything's progressing nicely, but we wanted you to have that update anyway. So at your leisure, feel free to review, um, these, this progress report of fiscal '23 projects, uh, which is the, I guess, the legal size paper that's in front of you. And so, anyway, sorry, Gilbert.
How about that?
If you're facing toward it, we can hear you. If you face away from it, we don't.
Then I just, I'll check over.
There you go.
Alright, hang on.
Yeah, just walk around on a trickle.
That means, okay. Proposed change number one. We're proposing to add a new project, as we mentioned before, Wagner Way, for a total cost of about $2 million. The proposed, how we're gonna plan to fund that is, one, Country Club is being proposed to be moved to 2024. Currently it has a budget of $312,000. So we move that to this project. Magruder, same thing, $742,000. We plan to move that to 24, 25. Depending, hopefully we can do that with Lingo Lane together, depends on the ride away situation. Lingo Lane, same thing, $418,000. Let's move that to 23, 24 to coincide with Magruder. It's also, as you recall, you did an engineer of $40,000 the past few months, a month ago, I believe. We're doing that now for the 23. We move these funds into Wagner Way. The last item, the residential street program. We have over slightly $4 million in that budget. The project came in about approximately $1 million on the budget. We're gonna take...
And that already went to council, was awarded?
Awarded.
Yeah.
Correct. Take, take a half a million dollar that, allocate it to the Wagner Way, boom, you got your whole $2 million there. Of course, we took an extra 40 to do the Lingo Lane engineering. Any questions on this proposal? Project one.
I don't like it, but...
Go ahead, Ms. Scott.
Well, I, I wanna do them all.
You wanna do them all?
I wanna do them all. I mean, that, that's what the problem is, is some of these we've put off and we've put off and, and...
Well, and to, and to, yeah, and to that point, you know, when we developed, uh, the fiber CIP that we're in now, in the middle of, literally... that we're in now, in the middle of, literally, we made it a point to, if we were going to shift things around, to keep them within the planning window. Because what was happening before was that when we would shift things around, we were just removing them, they weren't even being shifted. Or if they were shifted, they were being shifted just mentally up in the air saying, they'll make the next CIP, right? Versus we're saying, if we're going to shift projects, we're simply shifting them to the outer years of this planning window so that they still take place.
Correct.
Just like in the same five-year planning window, just not maybe in the year where they were, right? So from our perspective, that's like night and day difference than how we were approaching shifting projects before, because we're still saying they're going to get done. We're simply saying it's going to be in a different year in the same planning window. And so these projects that we're referring to in this example, as noted up there, they're being moved to fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And the only reason why twenty-five is up there is because we are currently, and you've, this has already been approved as well, already going through the pre-engineering for those roads. And we just don't know how long that's going to take. Lingo Lane in specifics, specifically, and Gilbert will shine a little green light on it, might necessitate some right-of-way acquisition because that, the way that that sort of curves after the railroad track and kind of around the bend is just very weird. And if we want to try and achieve, you know, a wider street in that stretch, we're probably going to have to just reroute that. And so that potentially could take a little bit of time, and that's why we kind of left it vague, twenty-four, twenty-five. We also don't know exactly when, when Wagner Way is going to be completed, since that's dependent on a lot of other things that we're working with through Texas Concrete. And so that's why that's listed that way. Versus you just seeing it removed and not seeing where it's being moved to at all.
But that necessitates that twenty-four and twenty-five also have shifts.
Uh, no, no, no.
That's one thing.
Because, go ahead.
That's one thing that we're trying to avoid now.
You're just swapping dollars.
In prior years, we used to swap, okay, this moved this one to this year, this year, push everything back. That's no longer the case. What we're going to do is just do the fact that Mr. Garza, as Sues mentioned, plus we might want to do a different type of, pretty road or what the case might be, take some time in right-of-way. But we're saying, let's move here to this year without affecting anything down the road, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Big difference than before.
Because keep in mind as well that one of the differences in this planning window then is probably different than previous five-year planning windows, is the financial flexibility that we have throughout the life of this planning window, that potentially had not been there in previous planning windows, right? So think of the debt capacity that we've talked about forever, you know, that is going to be there in twenty-four, in twenty-five, in twenty-six. So there's just a lot of flexibility there as well.
He's talking about the utility side of it, that cash flow.
Hey, I've got a question. And it gave me pause on what you're saying, moving these projects. Wagner Way, have no idea when it's going to happen. So we got two million dollars there for the project budget. But if we don't know when it's going to happen, and it pushes into twenty-four and twenty-five, why don't we just go ahead and take care of Magruder and Lingo first if we don't know what, what's happening with Wagner?
Right, well, let me rephrase that then. We don't know when Wagner Way will be completed. So we are currently in the design for Wagner Way. And so we expect, I think, the design to be completed in early next year.
Right, March.
And so if everything happens in, in sequential order, we would be bidding out Wagner Way late spring, early summer, and awarding that construction contract for that around that timeframe. And so it does give us plenty of time to figure out all of these other nuances that we need to figure out with Texas Concrete, whether that be the right-of-way acquisition or just other things that we're working, working on them with. We don't know, unless you, I don't remember off the top of my head, how long the construction, I guess, for that Wagner Way will take.
About a year.
And so part of the, I guess, question that we've been asking ourselves is, do you try and kind of, we don't have the money to do them all at once, right? Because one school of thought would be just redo everything at the same time, right? Redo Lingo, redo Magruder, redo Wagner. And then that way, the impact on that, I guess, road, or connector, or cut through, or however you want to describe it, is only once. Versus, you know, it being shut down to address Magruder, I mean, I'm sorry, Wagner, and then shut it down the following year to Lingo Lane and Magruder. So it is kind of a funky sequential thing that we're still trying to figure out. But we feel very confident that Wagner's going to take place and it's going to happen. None of the conversations that we've had with Texas Concrete have alluded to otherwise. But we're still in the design of that.
Do we have any anticipated or goals for closing the deal with Texas Concrete?
On timeline?
Yes.
Uh, no. One of the things that had, that came up recently, and I think I talked to a few of you about it, is the relocation of utilities. And so we amended the scope a little bit for the work that Civil Corps is doing to incorporate more specific utility surveys and potentially relocation of them. So there's been conversations with like AEP as an example about the relocating of the electric poles that are currently going down Vine and relocating them to Main Street and then do sort of a ninety-degree turn up, up Wagner. And those conversations have gone very, very favorable with AEP. Pending conversations would be with the gas company, obviously our utilities we can address ourselves. So that, those things are still trying to be fine-tuned. Our, my goal has been to try and get this done by the end of the year, but that's not going to happen because this utility issue just came up last month.
In the site plan, for me.
Right, and trying to, the other sort of issue conversation that's also begun that is presenting some challenges and some potential creative solutions is the site plan piece and driveway piece. Because the moment that we punch through to Main Street, we're not creating an intersection. And so this intersection of Main Street and Wagner now triggers TechDOT's rule of a distance requirement between this intersection and a driveway, which could potentially threaten the location of the existing driveway that Texas Concrete has. And so we're trying to figure out, working with TechDOT, how that new site plan for Texas Concrete would work, where are the driveways located, how is the circulation, where's, you know, and all of that. So I think we're having the right conversations in the weed meaning, meaning in the weeds of trying to figure out all these little nuances. But until we figure out all those little nuances, you know, we're not going to get to the point of finalizing an agreement with Texas Concrete for the land swap and giving up the right-of-way of Vine Street and all of these other things. Because from their perspective, rightfully so, you know, they're not going to finalize an agreement with us until all these nuances get figured out. And it would make sense for us to figure them out as well before we proceed with anything. And worst-case scenario, we're out the money that we, you know, invested in the design, but it would free up, you know, two million. And at that point, in that worst-case scenario, well then, we just focus on redoing what's there now and maybe shift back to focusing on Magruder and Lingo at that point.
Okay.
Is it correct that we logged it together back in March, come in March twenty-three again?
Yes, yeah.
You got, you got, that's just around the corner anyway.
Right, yeah.
Let me wrap this. Any questions for you guys over there? Here. Say hello again. Not. I don't know. Come on. There we go.
Okay. We're done?
We have to, you have to repeat everything.
I got to start all over again. The bar starts at what time?
Whenever you're ready.
When I hear that word, wrap it up. Real quick. Oh. Country Club. I'm sorry, not Country Club. Lingo, Maguire and Country Club, all these are sales tax money. Just one FYI on that one. Okay, I'm moving on to the next one. Okay. John Stockbar. Council, as you recall, the original scope was from fifty-nine all the way to County Creek. Came in back and kind of figured out, let's do the rest from County Creek all the way to Airline. And we came up with a cost of about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it goes from one point something to now two million dollars. Originally we have two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars left over from the original budget of John Stockbar, it was one point five. So we plan to throw that money to this project. In addition, of course, we're going to use some of the residential money up on this one too as well, proposing to use a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. The remaining, Sales Tax Development Corporation. Sales Tax Corporation has a project, as you well know, called ASR Wells. We're proposing to substitute that money with a MIT, CDBG MIT program, which will relieve this money to go to this project, three seventy-nine point five. I don't know if you're wondering, but why can't we just go ahead and use a CDBG MIT? This project doesn't qualify. But it does qualify for the ASR brackets, it is on our mitigation plan. With that said, we're looking at a two million dollar budget. Kenny, anything, Mr.?
Only thing is, because this project...
Get the mic.
Because this project, the, the cost is over twenty-five percent of the original project, we're going to have to rebid this one out. So it's going to be a formal bid project, but that's, that won't be an issue, it's
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you all.
Moving on to proposed change number three. Mickey Mouse. No, seriously. Deliom Plaza. Originally we have a budget of two point nine three million dollars. Council would like to see a five million dollar budget. So we're proposing to use approximately one point five million dollars from the ARPA money which was talking about earlier. And again, use the remaining funding from the ASR Wells and the sales tax over into this project and let the CDBG MIT pick up that portion of the ASR well. Just flip-flopping, that's all we're doing here. Any questions? Now, I think Jesus or Danielle has some comments to follow?
Yeah, we wanted to provide a brief update on where we were just with the design of it. And we felt, we just received this this week, but one of the, I guess, consistent feedbacks that we received from council had to do with the look of the building and the look of the, of the Performance Pavilion in terms of the material, the color of the brick, you know, et cetera. And so part of the reason why it was difficult to try and, I guess, identify a vision or identity for the original one was because originally the architect was trying to sort of mix in, you know, a component of so many different buildings. And instead of doing that, we told him and said, no, we probably overcomplicated for you by asking to do that. We want to just pick one building or two buildings and come up with something from that. And so we told him, just look at the Junior League building and look at the courthouse because of the stone component, and come up with something. And so this is the updated vision for the restroom building that incorporates, you know, a lighter colored brick to kind of match better with the brick that's downtown, but and incorporates some stone, limestone elements to it so that it at least has that in common with both the county courthouse building as well as the Junior League building. The same, I guess, theme, for lack of a better word, they would convert and apply it to the Performance Pavilion so that there's consistency with the usage of the brick and the limestone incorporation. And so we wanted to show it to you to just gauge your feedback and interest if you feel that this approach is more palatable and more, I guess, makes everything look a little just more, more appropriate, if you will.
It does, the only thing I would say, the entryway, is there any way to mimic the arch of the entrance to one of the Proctor Building?
Um, yeah, we can, we can ask about that. The elevations that you're looking at at the right don't incorporate, or I guess it does incorporate that entrance at the front, yeah, with the water fountains. And I guess you're referring to at least just that top part being an arch?
Yes. Because those side windows match the downstairs windows of that building.
Right.
But everything else kind of arches, and I think if you could pull in...
Pull in an arch there somewhere?
Agreed. Because the county courthouse has the arches too.
Right.
Yeah, and that's the two things that are similar that is missing off of that.
That's what I'm seeing is that on the Junior League building, it's the arches that you see first.
Yeah.
And the rendering they had before, they had brought in the arches from the courthouse, so I'm missing them. I like the rest of it, but I'm really missing the arches.
Are you saying arch every window?
Well...
I mean, a good compromise would be, would be a, a very noticeable, you know, arch at the entrance.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, because I see how it's tied together and I'm not an architect, but I, but I just look at these two and I miss the arches a lot.
It's funny, I saw that picture, that's a great picture of that building, I was looking at it and thinking, man, I wish we had something like that in Victoria, that's just awesome looking. Usually don't stand with my back against another wall, it's the wrong law.
Unless you're climbing down the side of that building, right?
And that brick sidewalk around is really nice. On the, the platform or the stage, you said you were going to use some color to that effect right there?
Uh, yeah, they didn't mock it up because they were just trying to, you know, seek some input from us. But the intent is that if we agree with the, with this approach...
Okay.
Of trying to have the architecture more match, you know, a combination of the stone courthouse and this building, that they would then go back and spend the time to come up with a mock-up of the Performance Pavilion to match the style.
Yep.
And it sounds like this style is, is better, and I would agree that it is better. We'll communicate to them about the incorporation of, of an arch.
That's, when you said that the pavilion would be similar, that's the first thing I thought of, was we really need the, the flowing of the arch more than... More uniform. Right now it looks like the Flying Nun's hat, to me.
Maybe Sally Field will do the ribbon cutting for us.
In brick and limestone, there you go. Yeah, but even, even the...
Aside from that though, that project is trending on schedule in terms of the design. They've already submitted thirty percent, a complete set actually of thirty percent, I guess, architectural engineering design work. Ken's reviewed those, staff's reviewing those, so that project is on schedule. The biggest pending thing was some of, was some of the architectural features. We are all, one of the other, we don't have a slide for this, but one of the other consistent feedbacks that we received on the original site plan and design was around the sidewalks. And the thought that, you know, the plaza would look weird, you know, if you had freshly poured looking sidewalks on one side and not so much on the other. And we did have that conversation with them, and there are some options that we're still working through because we don't want to also go down a path that would just create more issues. And so as an example, the sidewalk that leads towards Peaches and Tortilla, where the statue of the Confederate soldier is. Unless we completely remove and repl, and re, I guess, place how we position that statue, it would be impossible to convert that sidewalk to ADA. And so, they, the architect and engineer proposed some solutions that incorporate just like some finishes of concrete where we can probably just finish the existing concrete in a similar way, like just a top layer, that the others, to make it look the same. Or he says that there's also, there's also ways to make new concrete look aged, with just chemicals and colors that you blend into the concrete before you pour it, to kind of minimize that, that stark difference between freshly poured white concrete and older grade-out concrete. So we're working through those and working through examples of what, how many, what other sidewalks can be converted to ADA. So we are still looking into that feedback we received, and we agree that it makes sense to have something that at least attempts to try and make everything look similar.
More uniform.
So we're working through that one.
Excellent. Moving on. Proposed change number four. Pretty straightforward, you got, you have Longtree Creek drainage. This project currently right now is at four point three million dollars in this year's budget, this is the drainage. Again, proposing to move this money to the Public Safety Building and instead, and replace it with a CDBG MIT funding of three point nine, just swapping out because this is an eligible, eligible project. So we move this money over to Public Safety Building, which consisted mainly of TechDOT funding. Proposed change number five. As you recall, this is University of Houston, it went from fifty-nine all the way to Airline. We're proposing to add the connection to Sam Houston, Dytem and Reddick. That's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's a mill in Overly?
Yes.
Yes, it's strictly mere a hundred and fifty... Yes, just a strictly mirror, a hundred and fifty. But anyway, we're planning to use the interest. Wes is doing a good job on the interest, plus the market is helping us. We can, I think, hit that mark and take care of that.
Mostly the market, but we'll give Wes some-
Oh, come on, man, I'm trying to give the man credit, he's on TV too.
He's making some money in this market.
Yeah, amen to that.
Proposed change number six, this is a new add. This is Will Hurt Road between Guy Grant and John Stockton. Here's Salem right here, it runs not all the way, but to right here. The project is about three hundred thousand dollars, it consists of a reclaim, reclaim and sale with double honics.
Which will be a new process for us.
That-
Uh, nah, we've done it in the past. Um-
Where?
Uh, where? Everywhere?
Everywhere.
Uh, this is, you may recall when we, you may or may not, but when we introduced trying to do mill and overlays, um, one of the limitations is that on some of the streets, uh, it's impossible to do a mill and overlay because the application they had done before that was this. And there just wasn't enough base or even asphalt to mill and overlay. Um, what, do you remember the year that y'all did that mass, massive reclamation effort?
It's, no, it's ninety-eight, ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
Or before.
It's been a while.
Been a long-
Yeah, that was, you know, pre Y two K.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's new to us.
Yeah, I'm glad y'all remember Y two K.
But I think the conversation with the users moving forward, maybe in future budget in consent to do.
Right, so we wanna treat this as a somewhat of a pilot program, if you will. Um, I know I've mentioned this with y'all in our one-on-ones, but I'll mention it for the benefit of people that might be listening. But, um, we have roads that are short, dead-end roads, don't really service a lot of residences, and so historically, these roads are very difficult to make our CIP because from a cost-value standpoint, you know, completely reconstructing and spending millions of dollars, you know, on Will Hurt, you know, is for its usage, you know, we have to make those tough decisions, right? And so, we were trying to come up with an option that is, um, not cost prohibitive, um, and the street can get an improvement. Um, you know, when, and we want to do this job and we want y'all to see it, we want everybody to see it so you feel comfortable with us doing this in other streets that have this similar type of setup. And most of these streets, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of these streets that are dead-end streets like this are actually score less than a forty, I think.
Oh, yeah. Right, and, and we-
So, you're right. So, so this is another way for us to tackle those streets that through the street rating scored very low, um, to help our effort in catching up with that, if you will.
So, life expectancy in doing it like this, I mean, we're not coming back every five years and spending three hundred thousand.
No, we could get on something like this, what we do is we'll, we'll reclaim the base, we'll add a cement to it, add some extra base if we need to. The key, one thing Jesus was mentioning, is tackle the streets that are open sections. There are a whole lot, you can, you can raise the street up a lot of times, an inch or two, get that extra base in there, but adding the cement, adding that extra base in it is gonna get another twenty years because, or thirty years, because these are very low-volume roads.
Okay.
So, it's, it's a great process to move forward.
But this street, I always thought that Dairy Road was the poster boy for potholes. This, this is a quilt of potholes. That's a good description.
I wonder if McGruder might be running in there pretty close.
It would be an awesome boost to your capital program if that works out, you'd be able to ship money around in.
Right, be able to address more streets and just everything.
Right.
I didn't know if I mentioned this, but the Will Hurt money, it's leftover money from the residential, I think that kinda heats up the rest, I believe. Now, last but not least, Public Safety Building. I have to go for every rabbit hole and look for my pennies on this one. Anyway, let me start with twenty-three. In twenty-three, we had an original budget about, for engineer land, about three point five million dollars. After, bless you, after everything is said and done, that budget was revised to three point six, which is an increase of about a hundred fifty-eight thousand. How we handle that? What I use, some interest income from the ARPA money that has not been allocated, Jesus, bless you.
Thank you.
And as you recall, we did some land sale for the relocation of Fire Station Number Five, that's not gonna happen. Well, through another hundred and eight, that's how we covered that hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars in twenty-three. Now, in twenty-five, I mean twenty-four, we have an original construction budget of twenty-five million dollars. It's revised up to right now, it's today, about thirty-five million dollars, we got a ten million dollar increase. Currently, what we're proposing right now, here's the funding sources. As I recall, the Longtree Drainage Project was gonna be, was gonna, we're gonna use the CDBG mid funds and move those funds from the text-up over into this category. We talked about using the ARPA money, some new funding of that, that's two million dollars. Here's a new item, I don't know, some of y'all probably know it, but there's a new suggestion from the CDBG mid program. We're proposing to do have the CDBG mid program build the nine-one-one center. I know it goes all the way, but if, the logic is, that's the mitigation issue right there. Why not use the mid to fund that? Plus, why not use the mid to harden the whole building, because that's mitigation too as well. Plus, the engineering and everything else. Eh, we, I came up with three point five, again, I'm not an engineer. So, but I took prior's engineering numbers extrapolating, that's what it came out to be. New text-up overpass fund, about two hundred thousand dollars. I do have some leftover prior-year CIP projects that came in and under towards the end of the year, that's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And believe it or not, yes, I do have some money left over from the Hurricane Harvey. This is administration reimbursement from FEMA, in other words, they're reimbursing us for all the labor that we did, indirect labor costs, uh, finance, HR, blah, 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 all that. I have that sit aside in a special revenue fund, just in case we need it down the road. We need it here. It's a hundred fifty thousand dollars, plus I'm scraping the rest of the interest income as of the end of this year, about seventy thousand dollars. That's your ten million dollars funding sources. No additional bonds, just strictly pay-as-you-go.
Very creative.
And this is the kicker, you know, I mean, hopefully that number's higher. And I, I'm not an engineer, I just took a three, three hundred fifty dollars a square foot times the current size of the nine-one-one, which is thirty-eight hundred square feet. And I slapped down another two million dollars for hardening and fifteen percent for engineering, that's that number.
But is our nine-one-one call center undersized right now?
Yes, and that's the point, thirty-eight hundred square feet is that one.
Probably needs to be bigger, yeah.
It's really small.
Right, and there's also some additional grants we might be able to get for that part of it, but, um, we're still pursuing that piece. Obviously, we're thinking very creatively, you know, on how to go about this because as we've mentioned, we're trying to, um, not, not go down the path of issuing additional debt
Right.
for the Public Safety Building because as of the last debt capacity update you received from Gilbert, there was roughly eight million dollars available in fiscal year twenty-four. And if we were to have to go that route for the additional money needed for the building, it would take up all of that. And we either want you to have the flexibility to add other projects, uh, with that eight million or let it just slide over, you know, to another year. And so, that's why we're thinking very creatively here.
So, looking at the CDBG mid funding-
Yes, I'm headed there next.
So, we're down to about ten and a half that's left unallocated?
Uh, no, less than, less than that, less than that, so, um, my official CDBG mid notes, so, in Gilbert's presentation, he shows three point five of mid towards the Public Safety Building, four million for Longtree.
Okay. I missed that one.
Right?
Well, if you weren't rounding, yes.
Yes, I, I'm rounding. Uh, and the ASR piece is a little misleading because the amount that was allocated in VS CDC was not for the entire ASR well project, that was for a grant match. And so, VS CDC had two million dollars over two fiscal years allocated towards an ASR grant that we applied for that had that, um, ASR total project being what?
Five point nine.
Five point nine million. So, if we do proceed with an ASR well and fund that all out of the CDBG mid, um, you're in essence up to close to fourteen, fifteen million dollars of the twenty or twenty-seven that we would get already accounted for as part of what you're just hearing today. Hence why this is a big hit to us, um, because originally, when we thought we were gonna get forty, our thought was, great, like, we can do this and still have plenty of money, you know, to have conversations about transformational projects, you know, and other things. But now, when it gets slashed in half, now it's like, oh crap, you know, we can still do this, but it just doesn't leave as much money up for conversation. And we have so many things that are pending, right? We're pending, what are the results of the INI study, right? What's the results of, you know, other costs associated with SCADA upgrade? You know, there's so many different things. And so, hence why, you know, Mark's really pushing and fighting, you know, for us to get as much money as possible so we can try and achieve this, but still be able to get at least a few transformational projects out of the money that comes from CDBG mid.
And just for closure, full closure, when I did this, I was still assuming the twenty, I mean, the forty. So, it's not like-
Right.
And then when I heard this a couple of weeks ago, I think, when you told me-
Yeah, last week.
Like, what the hell? Just put things a little tighter, that's it.
Keep the, the off-channel reservoir interconnect on, on the list, please.
Yes.
That's, that's, that's on the list.
That's on our list for, for that, and I think that's under design currently.
I've got a proposal from them.
Okay. Let's get it under design so we know exactly how much that's gonna cost. So, we thought, uh, at our last workshop that at this workshop, we would be able to provide, you know, with confidence, you know, how much money we're gonna get, what can it be used for, and now it's looking like you, we won't get that till the March workshop. But we'll keep you updated though, obviously, in real time, you know, as we learn more about it. But, anyway, that's where we're at with the, um, CIP program, um-
Hold on.
Just-
I'm not planning to go through all this, I just wanna let you, you do have this information available. As I mentioned, you do, I'm showing the beginning, if you wanna go through the numbers and see the layout. But bottom line, you went for forty-eight, forty-five million dollars, now to a forty-eight million dollar CIP program. And of course, right here, I'll list out why that increase of two point eight million dollars occurred. If you like, I'll go through it, but, um, pretty straightforward, that ninety-five is basically John Stockton and the Delion. Here's your, uh, new Delion money by itself, one point five million dollars, Ben Wilson, Public Safety Building, if you take that and that, that's the, that's that, uh, sixteen million dollars. Then, I took away this and added, I mean, took away that and added this, these kinda cross out, the, the red is a negative, just in case you're trying to do math. Other than that, in twenty-four, because we have this building in twenty-four, the Public Safety, currently right now, it's at fifty-two, it goes up by ten million dollars, and here's the layout of the additional money. And, uh, I did this for whoever wants to go through the numbers and look at it, make sure. And I'd be happy to sit down and talk about it a little slower, but I know, uh, I'm getting close to that time to cut it off. Other than that, I wish everybody a holidays, Merry Christmas, God bless y'all.
Can you, can you, can you bow like that?
Well, old people, maybe historians can.
Oh, man. Uh-
No, thank you.
Hopefully, this was helpful for you to, to understand where we're at. Um, as we typically do, over the course of the next, you know, four or five months, we'll finalize the CIP for fiscal year twenty-four. So, at our March workshop, we'll specifically have that conversation. Um, and if there is anything that needs to be changed or added to fiscal year twenty-four, that's the conversation we plan to have in March so that leading into May, when, which is typically when, I guess, council head nods to CIP before we officially put the proposed budget together in June, everything's just hopefully smooth, um, and there really isn't much to talk about at that time. So, um, that's all we got for today. Happy to answer any questions or talk about whatever y'all want, if you wanna go back to items from council.
Well, I just think it's amazing, we're gonna spend, and y'all, please share this with everybody that asks you, forty-eight point two-one million dollars on capital improvements projects this year, jumping to sixty-two point two-eight million the next year. Unbelievable.
It's a lot. We appreciate the support.
Well, I appreciate the creativeness to get ten million dollars and not have to go back.
Yeah.
Just keep in mind, next year's CIP, there's a, there's a twenty-five million dollar bond issued, plus you got another thirteen, twelve million dollar streets.
Right.
That's what's the big bulk of right there.
Right, and that'll probably be the largest in a while-
Yeah.
Selling of bonds that we've done, so. Okay, and things are ready, by the way, so we can start that early if you like.
Does anybody have anything, I'm gonna close the work session and open back up items from council, if anybody came up with anything else? I think Mrs. Scott had requested, and I think I agree with her, if we're gonna be here for lunch anyway, can't we just make it a working lunch?
We can, if that's what y'all prefer.
And also, uh, for the March one, um, if y'all would submit any items y'all wanna discuss just among us, because I think it's always important at these workshops that we have some discussion about random items that, you know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I had something I wanted to discuss, but I realized since I haven't submitted it, we really can't.
But under items from council, I mean, if it's questions, you know, or, or something like that, you can ask.
For staff, but what I'm looking for is dialogue
Right, 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 right.
Between us. Right, and that, we always have good dialogue when we do get the chance to talk, so, and have a, a specific item on there, so if there's something that you'd like to visit about in, in greater length than what we would typically take on a city council meeting, please, that Mr. Garza have it before March.
Well, I, I will say, you know, as we've talked about CIP and stuff, um, we're in a position today to spend that money you just talked about in the next year and stuff like that because of previous councils had stuck to a plan and allowed us at this point to have that, so, uh, I do appreciate previous councils sticking to a plan, the, the money's available now.
Well, someone must hold a big stick over us. No, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Gilbert.
I'd like to thank the staff, this was a great present, group of presentations and
Yes.
And kind of answered my questions ahead of time, which I know is not always easy, so, thank you. I mean, like, they thought about them ahead of time and answered them.
Okay, all right, thank y'all, and meeting is adjourned.